The City Council Committee of the Whole will meet on Thursday, November 3rd, at 6:00 or 10:00 after, 12:00 after, for the purpose of discussing tenant protection ordinance regarding condo conversions in person at City Council Chambers, 93 Washington Street, 2nd floor, and via remote participation in accordance with Chapter 107 of the Act of 2022. In-person attendance of members of the public will be permitted, and the public may also participate, listen, and/or view this meeting while in progress via the remote participation platform Zoom through any one of the following ways. Individuals may participate remotely in the meeting via -- okay. Members of the public and/or parties with the right and/or requirement to attend this meeting may access the remote participation meeting through any one of the following ways. Please click on the link found in the agenda, password 857069, or telephone 877-853-5257, or 888-475-4499, webinar ID 8093390510. Every effort will be made to ensure that the public can adequately access the proceedings in real time via technological means. In the event that we are unable to do so on matters not requiring a public hearing, we will post on the City of Salem's website an audio or video recording transcript or other comprehensive record of proceedings as soon as possible after the meeting. The City Council Committee of the Whole met in City Council Chambers on November 3rd, 2022, at 6:12 PM for the purpose of discussing the matters listed below, which is tenant protection ordinance regarding condo conversions. Let's see. Notice of this meeting was posted on October 26, 2022, at 3:02 PM, and this meeting is being recorded. Yes. Absent tonight are Councillor Proznowski, and with us remotely is Councillor Merkel, and also with us tonight is Amanda Chiancola from Planning, and Dominic Pangalo from the Mayor's Office. I'm sorry. Oh. And the former councillor Christine Madoura is with us also. All right. Okay. Just checking to make sure we're seeing everything here. Okay. So, I think we're going to start tonight -- does that video look right?
Is there a video of this person?
Let's try that. I don't know. Okay. All right. Okay, that looks better. All right. We're going to start with Ms. Chiancola, who's going to do a presentation, which I should have queued up here. I will say that this is a discussion. We do not have an ordinance in front of us tonight. We are just having a discussion about what the Affordable Housing Trust Fund Board has been talking about for almost two years now, I believe. It's been quite a long time, and it's time for some public feedback and comment, and so hopefully people are out there and can give us some thoughtful feedback and ask any questions tonight. So with that, Ms. Chiancola, let's see if I can do this. This is where I need technical help from our Zoom people. How do I share? Share from here?
Yeah. If you have it, are you saying it's up there too? It's up there.
I do have the -- I mean, I have it right here.
Yeah. So the bottom arrow.
What, bottom arrow? I'm not seeing it.
You don't have the little button.
Where is yours? Click on Zoom? Oh, okay. I have to go here. Oh, so share screen here. Okay. All right, and click on this, and hit share.
There you go.
Yay? Okay. And then go to --
Hit the bottom, that little box. See the little box next to the mini? Wait. Hold on. This one. Hold on. This one. Yeah. Slideshow? Here you go.
Okay, got it. I was looking at the top. Okay. All right. This is not what it looked like at home. Okay.
All right, thank you. So, as Councillor President had mentioned, the Affordable Housing Trust Fund Board has been working on this for a couple of years now, and the trust had voted for staff to come and provide -- and have a presentation on the framework. We've been working on the framework in getting feedback from members of the public, and so we wanted to go over what's been done today, why we're doing this, some background on condo conversions just in general in Massachusetts, and then feedback we've heard today. And we really want to hear feedback from the public and from members of the council tonight as well. And so that's what we're hoping to take away. Next slide, please. So you'll see on that prior slide, it said Framework for a Tenant Protection Ordinance, and this is a tenant protection ordinance specifically regarding condominium conversions. And so the things that I'm going to go through tonight, again, the background, the current challenges here in Salem, which explains why this is in front of you tonight, why we're talking about this, and that'll get into some details on conversion rates, household conditions. I'll go through a review of a survey that we sent out, and then the real meat of the discussion is going to be the proposed framework, and that's where I want to share with you what we're thinking of, or what's the purpose of the ordinance, what is the process for a condominium conversion when a landlord wants to convert an apartment building into a condo? How is it administered? And then the waiting period, relocation fee, notice of intent, those might sound like foreign language to folks who have not been following this, so we're going to go into that in a bit more detail, and then discussion and next steps. But if there's any questions or comments throughout, feel free to interrupt me. I'm okay with that, too. Next slide, please. So, in background, in Massachusetts, back in 1983, the Massachusetts Legislature adopted a condominium conversion law in response to a surge of condominium -- of apartments being converted into condos. And the law was meant to prevent displacement by providing just some basic protections to tenants, and it allowed communities to adopt greater or different protections. And then that law was amended in 1989, and then again in 2005 to allow for certain waivers. For a community to adopt this, local legislative action must be accompanied by a declaration and a form of findings that local conditions constitute an acute rental housing emergency that requires local action. So that would be part of an ordinance. Next slide, please. The challenges that we have with that state law is the state's condo conversion law doesn't have any regulations on how to implement it. So the state says you could do this, but how it's actually implemented is not identified. And the law also, it only applies to buildings with four or more housing units. Local action cannot lower that threshold. And then importantly, you need to have meaningful enforcement. This takes a staff, this takes staff to enforce it, and without that, it's just not feasible. And so without that, devoting local staff and resources is not enforced by many municipalities. Next slide, please. So why are we talking about this now? Well, the state condo conversion law is not being enforced in Salem. For that reason, I just stated before, there's not a dedicated staff member looking at when there's four or more units in the building being converted, and there's no implementation mechanism identified. And so it's not meeting the goals of preventing displacement. We've also found, and this is through research with the Affordable Housing Trust Fund Board, that the pace of condominium conversions has steadily been increasing for the past six years, and I think everyone's aware of the housing crisis we're facing, where the housing costs are continuing to increase, but the wages are not increasing at that same rate. We're seeing the decline in housing diversity, and you'll see this in some of the data slides, but Salem's rapidly losing its two- and three-family housing stock to conversions, bless you. And displacement due to conversions disproportionately impacts people of color, and we see that in that one in four renters in Salem identify as non-white, and that's according to the American Community Survey from 2019. Next slide. And this is just some background data, the total conversion units in Salem, and this goes through up till August 2021, and it's from starting at 2016. But you can see that chart, you know, just steadily increasing. From 2015 to August 2021, there were 394 rental units converted to condos. That's significant. You think about 394 families or households in Salem had a rental unit that were converted to an ownership unit, and over half of all the homes that were built in Salem were built before 1940, and that's typically the kind of homes that you see converted, those older homes that are more vulnerable. And that just reduces the city's rental options. Next slide, please. And then the data got teased out further to see, okay, well, what kind of units are being converted? And this is looking at assessors' codes, that's what those numbers on the right are. 102 is a condominium, so that's why you don't see 102 there. This is looking at if a family was previously a three-family apartment and then got converted into a condo, it's shown in green. If a family was -- a household or house was previously a single family and converted to a condo, shown in 1. So you see these red bars around there? That is the one and the two and three family, sorry, that's the two and three family buildings that are being converted into condos. And you can see in Salem, this is pretty unique. This isn't -- I don't see this data across other communities, but the majority of housing stock being converted are those two and three family. But if you remember, the state law only applies to buildings with four or more units, which is a much smaller piece of the pie in each of these years. And that's why local legislation would be required. Next slide, please. And this is looking at household conditions from the American Community Survey in the 2019. Owners in Salem, 52% of the housing -- households in Salem own, but 48% are renters, and of those renters, the median income is $40,000. That's $60,000 less than an owner. Again, think about this, if you're a renter and $40,000 a year, you -- your apartment's being converted, there's fewer places for you to go to, and you have to, you know, make up with that rent. So renters are more at risk of being displaced and may not be able to continue to stay in Salem. And again, displacement disproportionately impacts people of color. Next slide, please. So this is showing the pace in a little bit different way, but again, it's showing that the housing stock isn't keeping up with our needs. We have 48% of our households renting. Condos have increased 8.3%, that's the percent change from fiscal year 16 to 21, but you can see our two-family and our three-family households stock, those numbers are decreasing. So we have 3.8% fewer two-families and 4.7% fewer three-families. Next slide, please. So as I mentioned previously, a local legislation home rule petition would be required to lower that threshold from four to -- for anything less than four. And as this council recall, may recall, it voted to send this home rule petition that would allow for Salem to adopt an ordinance that impacts two and three families. And so that's making its way through the legislature, and there was actually an update in October 6th that it had its second reading, and it's on to the third reading. But it still is making its way through the process, and so currently, we would not be allowed to -- the City Council cannot adopt an ordinance that impacts two and three families, which, as you saw on that prior slide, is where the need is. Next slide, please. So the Affordable Housing Trust Fund Board, as we're working our way through this legislation, wanted to start framing out what the ordinance might look like and getting feedback from the community. Over the summer, we sent out this survey, you see this pamphlet here, to 8,000 households, and there are a lot of people in this room who helped with that mailing, so thank you for that. It went to any household, any building that had eight or fewer units. It was sent to the property owner that we have on the assessor's records, and we also sent it to -- it just says occupant, and then went to Unit 1, Unit 2, Unit 3, so that way the tenants would receive it. And then we had a little QR code and kept a super short survey. We wanted to keep it simple, had my phone number and email, and so people could contact, and I had fielded a lot of calls and emails from folks who had input to provide. We received over 200 survey responses, and more than half of them were from renters, which I've never seen that kind of input from renters. So I was really happy with that, 200 survey responses. Next slide, please. And with that feedback, the Affordable Housing Trust Fund Board started morphing the ordinance. You know, we started out with some ideas for the framework, and then we changed it based on the feedback we received from the survey, and that's again what we're doing tonight is we want to hear feedback based on the framework that we set up and making sure that we're going in the right direction with this. So the ordinance framework, the real meat of this is the purpose, which, if you've heard me talk about an ordinance before, I think this is super important. You always talk about what the purpose is, and everything in there should relate back to that purpose. That's why we're proposing a process, a notice of intent. The process just outlines how the condo conversion would happen. Again, notice of intent, waiting period, relocation, I'll talk about all of that, and then administration, how we actually implement the ordinance. Next slide, please. So the purpose, I have four purpose sections here, or numbers, is to decelerate the rate of conversion of naturally affordable renting -- rental housing stock into condominiums and cooperatives, especially in multifamily residential buildings, to minimize residential displacement of renter households by strengthening tenants' rights during a condominium conversion, to preserve the supply of housing and diversity of housing options in response to demographic changes such as smaller and older households. And I think this fourth one is really important to remember, we're not precluding condominiums from occurring with this ordinance, that's not what the framework is, but it's to provide a permitting path for the owner of an existing multifamily to convert that rental into a condominium. Next slide, please. And so this is an overview of the process. Think of it as essentially the two phases. And of course, it's a planner presenting this, so I have to have alphabet soup for you, a conditional conversion permit, CCP, and a final conversion permit, FCP. So what happens is first is this notice of intent. I'm going to explain more what's in that, what that means, but a landlord needs, in this ordinance we're proposing, for a landlord to submit a notice of intent to all current and former tenants, by former tenants, that's a tenant who's occupied the unit within the past year, and send that notice of intent to let them know, I'm intending to convert this apartment into a condominium. And then when, within one month of that notice, they would submit a conditional application to the city. And so within one month, they submit this conditional application, and the conditional application is approved if they meet that requirement. They did this notice of intent and acknowledged there's a waiting period that's required, and we'll talk about that. There's a right-to-purchase requirement in the ordinance, and so that's identified as well in the conditional permit, but this is pointing back to what the ordinance would say. And then a relocation payment. I bolded the ones that I'm going to talk about in more detail. And then after the conditional permit, there's the waiting period. This is one of the things that we've received a lot of feedback on, and I'm interested in hearing your feedback and members of the public on this. And then after a waiting period, there's a final conversion application. So after you did everything that was required in the conditional permit, you waited out whatever that waiting period is that expired, or the tenant vacates and finds a new home. So if the tenant finds a new place to live within a month, then they can convert that unit in a month. It's just that waiting period or when the tenant vacates. And then the tenant, or if the tenant decides to move forward with purchasing the unit, which is that right-to-purchase requirement. And then the final conversion permit would be issued after all those criteria are met. Next slide, please. So again, a super key, important part of this ordinance is that there is implementation. You have staff to administer it. Again, state law, silent on what permitting looks like, silent on the procedure, so that's up to the municipality to determine. And what we discussed at the trust was having an administrative permit. So this is an administrative process handled by the Neighborhood Stability Coordinator. This is a new position that we're currently advertising. And if at any point the tenant or the property owner believe the other has not complied with their obligations under the ordinance, they can request a hearing before a condominium review board. And I'll talk about what that makeup looks like. But the idea is you go through this process administratively, but you have the right to appeal it. And then what's proposed is if it's a vacant unit that's being converted, there'd be a one-year notice. That's what that waiting period is. And if it is an occupied unit, it'd be a two-year notice. And then, again, the process is a conditional permit and then a final permit after that waiting period. Next slide, please. This is what the condominium board looks like, what we're proposing. It would consist of five members, all Salem residents, and at least two of the members will be homeowners and two renters. So that means you could have three renters and two homeowners, or three homeowners and two renters, but it could be either or, but you have to have at least two renters and at least two homeowners on there to strike that balance. The members have to be familiar with housing needs and issues in Salem. And of the five members, at least one needs to be in a protected class, and at least one member must be on the Affordable Housing Trust Fund Board, but not one of the elected officials. The trust fund board is made up of the mayor or their designee, the council president or their designee, and I believe two councillors. So it wouldn't be any of the elected officials. Next slide, please. Now, this is the waiting, the waiting period. Again, we heard a lot of feedback on this. When we had sent out this flyer, we actually were proposing a longer waiting period and refined it in this framework based on the feedback we received. So this is regarding occupied units. If a unit is occupied, then it would be two years from when they get that notice of intent. If it's, if the household is in a protected class, and that's defined as being an older adult, an older adult or a person with a disability, or a low-income household, then it would be two years and up to a two-year extension if unable to find housing in Salem. So that's where you see, it could potentially be up to four years. And that's just showing on the left-hand side the state requirements for those four or more units. It's one year prior to intent for all households, two years for protected class, and two more if unable to find housing. So the four years that we're proposing for protected class completely mirrored state law, it's just, we're increasing it, proposing an increase for the occupied units. And then one of the requirements that we're proposing is that the notices must be translated into the tenant's primary language. Next slide, please. The relocation fee is also, was a fruitful discussion in the Affordable Housing Trust Fund Board. It was initially proposed less than this. So state law requires a relocation payment of $750 per tenant, or $1,000 for protected class. The trust had landed on proposing $5,000 for the tenant, and so that's for a unit, think of it, not if there are three tenants, one unit. It's $5,000 for that unit. Paid within 10 days of vacating. And it gets a little more nuanced than that, you know, if a household is, needs the funds to pay a moving company, they could, the money could go directly to that moving company before vacating, or at vacating. So that way, there's a little bit of flexibility that can be worked out between the landlord and the tenant, and again, the Neighborhood Stability Coordinator would be involved as part of that. And that $5,000, this thing, in first-last security, it's really expensive, and $1,000 just doesn't cut it. Next slide. And so here's the notice of intent, basically the, what needs to be included in this notice. So the owner must provide a notice of intent to the tenants, and it has to include that the owner intends to convert the apartment into a condo, and that the tenant has two years, whatever the waiting period is, from the date of the notice to vacate. And it also must include the contact information for the Neighborhood Stability Coordinator, and that's super important because this position's role will be to help connect tenants with resources, whether it's relocation cost assistance, identifying a new apartment, signing up on applications for housing, and so it's connecting them with resources, not just saying, okay, you have two years to move. It's trying to set up the tenant for success. And then the tenant also has the right to purchase the unit, or their designee. If the tenant refuses the right to purchase, the city has the right, it wouldn't be the city, it'd be like the Affordable Housing Trust Fund Board if they voted to do that and if they had money to do that, and the unit would have to be deed-restricted if that occurred. If the tenant chose the right to purchase the unit, it would be at the market value. So I want to make that clear as well. It's the landlord sets the price for this unit, the tenant just has that first right to purchase before it goes on to the market. So that's what that means. And if the tenant doesn't move forward to purchasing the unit, then there's that relocation fee to the tenant. And no change can be made to the rental agreement, except for rent increase that doesn't exceed the Consumer Price Index or 10%, whichever is less. So basically, we want to make sure that the landlord isn't going to put some egregious terms in the agreement that essentially forces the tenant out. Next slide. The notice of intent for vacant units is a bit different. The owner must provide the notice of intent to the Neighborhood Stability Coordinator one year in advance. And that year, that one-year waiting period doesn't apply if the unit had been previously owner-occupied for the 12 months immediately preceding the unit becoming vacant, or where the city or its designee purchases the vacant unit for the purpose of deed-restricting it for affordability, or if the owner is selling the unit to a bona fide family member. Next slide, please. So this is the permit review process. What does that look like? It's really not discretionary. If the owner meets the requirements, they get the conditional permit, and then they get the final permit. So the permit shall be granted where all documentation required has been submitted, and staff has made the determination that the notice has been provided as required. So that's that notice of intent is translated, if it needs to be, it has all of the, and from all the information that was required in the ordinance. And then the permit may be denied if the documentation is incomplete, if the owner has taken action to circumvent state or local law, has had unreasonable rent increases beyond what's allowed, the CPI or 10%, whichever is less, a reduction or elimination in services, termination of tenancy without cause, imposition of new conditions on the tenancy. So that's where it can be denied. So it's really just, if you follow the requirements, you get the permit. And the permit may be revoked where any document or statement was false. Again, it's trying to set up this process so it's very transparent what happens, but again, setting that tenant up so they don't become homeless and they have time to find a new location to live. Next slide, please. So I know that was a lot of information, and I'm happy to go through any questions you have, but I'd really like to hear your comments on this, any of the sections, ordinance in general. And the next steps here is the comments that I heard tonight, I'll bring back to the Affordable Housing Trust Fund Board to review and continue to refine the draft ordinance, and then eventually the ordinance will be submitted to the City Council, but we're not going to propose, we wouldn't submit it until after the enablement legislation is adopted.
All right. I'm going to stop sharing, if that's okay. And I also want to tell the councillors that this whole presentation is in the ShareDrive Committee of the Whole. All right. Thank you, Amanda. It's a lot of information. It's why we wanted to have the meeting, to bring this forward, to talk about it. And it's tricky, right? This is, this is a tricky ordinance. This is a tricky ordinance, because we have to balance the whole, the condo conversions create units that are, that create affordable housing for ownership, which is also an issue, right? Affordable homeownership is also an issue in Salem. And protecting tenants who live here, we hear this all the time, affordability in Salem, and keeping people who live in Salem in Salem. So this is, this is tricky. So, with that, I will open it up. Counsel McCarthy.
Thank you, Madam Chair. What department is the neighborhood advisor being proposed, and why are we already advertising a role that we haven't adopted?
So, the role is a pilot role, being funded through ARPA.
Okay.
And if that role works out, then we would present it to city council in the future. So it's a two-year position, and it would sit with the mayor's office.
So the position would fall under the mayor's office?
Correct.
Okay. My second question is, and for full disclosure, I do not own a two or three-family home, nor does anyone in my family, but being a contractor, I do know lots of people that do own two and three-family homes. At what point does someone who, I mean, if we're, if we as a city are going to adopt local legislation that would make condo conversions, at best, as was just stated, more difficult for someone who owns a piece of property and wants to convert their piece of property, which is allowed by state law, at what point do the people, when you did your survey, how many people responded back who were actual owners? Because this potential, I mean, not for someone who's going to go buy a piece of property and convert it, but someone who's owned a piece of family property for a long time, the family's now aged out, and now they're looking at the, you know, because as your chart dictated, a lot of people have been cashing out. At what point do they get notified that they potentially could be, the period for them to convert has now been extended out by almost two to four years? If someone wants to take their family home, and they're not going to sell it to a family member, and wants to then convert it into condos, at what point do we notify them that they're, this change could directly affect them? Because this isn't, this is, this is a state law, this isn't, that we're going to potentially go locally up against. So anybody would have an expectation that we would follow state, but if we're going to go not follow state, at what point do we have, other than a public meeting about conversions, I guess, with the public, I mean, at what point do the, what point do the property owners get to say? I mean, as I stated, I don't own a piece of property, so I don't have, I don't have any, I don't have a stake in it, but anybody who would have owned a piece of property that's two or three-family, now is going to be directly affected by what is being proposed, because the state law says they can, but now locally, we're going to change the law in front of them. So at what point do they, is there a, is there going to be a period where we're going to change the law and say, okay, now you've got two to five years before we do this? Is there going to be some, I mean, I'm all for protecting the tenant's rights, I understand that, I respect that. But at some point, if someone, especially, I mean, we're looking at some of these families that have owned properties for a long time. A lot of these two and three families, they're multi-generational units of families living in these homes. And now, whoever's the last person standing in this home who's, you know, they're the last family member to take ownership of the home, they got to the point now that they want to, don't want to have tenants, they don't want to be, for whatever reason, now all of a sudden, we're changing, we're moving the goalpost, we're changing the game. At what point do we notify them that the game's being changed, and what time, what kind of leeway, what kind of safeguards do we put in place for them? Because now we're going to change. And someone, someone may, if someone's watching this at home, someone would be saying they're going to start the process tomorrow, if this is, you know, if the state comes through. And you, that chart you showed that showed, you know, the 120-something conversions last year, that could, I can't guess, but I'm assuming it would greatly increase, because people are going to want to change before we change the law. So these are, that's the difficult question. And I understand the expanding out the tenant's rights, and, but at the same time, is you're changing it for the people who own these properties. And that, that's a difficult conversation as well, because they own the property, and now we're changing what they can't do, can or cannot do with their property. I mean, I understand protecting the tenants, but at that, at what point do you also look at, you know, you're going to implement and say, when does this start? Upon passage? I mean, it can't be, you pass it, and then it starts tomorrow. So what's timeframe is, the proposal is to, when we, if this were to be adopted, when would the, when would it start? I guess is the bigger question.
Thank you so much for that question and that feedback. You're right, it is a really challenging discussion. At the Affordable Housing Trust Fund Board, we've talked about, you know, needing to have this robust information period when this rolls out, to make sure that property owners are aware of it. We haven't talked about that start date and what that is, but that's a conversation that we'll need to have, and I think it's an important one. And, you know, it's doing things like direct mailers to let people know, meetings. We haven't rolled out what that plan looks like, but we will do that. And so that's just something to include in the process, is making sure that folks are aware, and then thinking through what that timeline. So if anyone has suggestions, ideas on what that timeframe looks like, we could talk about it tonight, or I can bring it back to the trust, and they can tease, work through Counsel Cohen.
Thank you, Madam President. I'm one of the current council designees, and I am an owner-occupier of a four-family in Salem, and every one of my tenants is in the protected class. And I hope that the other people on the Affordable Housing Trust Fund Board have found me to be more representative of someone who supports not only the intent, but the specifics and the way it's evolved. So I'm not going to get into a lot of the detail, because I voted as a board member on all the specifics that Amanda talked about. I do want to say something, and hopefully, the people who do serve on the board and the public who have heard me tell this story, forgive me for telling it again. From my living room, I can see five buildings across the street. The one directly across from my house is a single-family. Two to the right are three families that sold in the same weekend for cash, $100,000 more than the asking price. They have all, for different reasons, become vacant and are being converted to condos. To the right, there's a building that's a four-family that's still a rental property, and then there's a two-family and a three-family on the other side that were purchased by one person, and within about a month, every tenant was given notice that their rent would increase between $1,000 and $1,200. Half of those renters were using rental assistance like Raft, and so, obviously, unable to pay that. I defy anyone who pays a mortgage to figure out how to pay an extra $1,200 a month in their mortgage. And at this point, all those renters, except one, have moved. So this is an extreme example, but I think it's more representative. And I feel like, if anything, the numbers that we were looking at are underestimating what the problem is. So I'm just, I'm very supportive of this concept and the changes that were made. At our last board meeting, we talked about the relocation fee, and I think there was a really good, robust discussion. And just an example, if I sold one of my one-bedrooms as a condo, I would get probably over $350,000. And $5,000 is a very small percentage of that. And the law that Massachusetts had several years ago, where a landlord could only charge first, two out of three, first-last security, was changed so that property owners can now charge first-last-insecurity. And in most cases, that far exceeds $5,000. So it's my opinion, but hopefully, people understand, look around their neighborhood, and, you know, if you know your neighbors, you probably are, especially if you live in an area like where I do, which has a high ratio of multifamilies, you're seeing this happen really every day.
Counsel Watson-Pelt.
Thank you, President Marcello. Amanda, could you, thank you for that presentation, by the way. I always enjoy your presentations. I find them really informative and really well-delivered, so thank you. This, I think the answer is embedded a little bit in one of the story that Counselor Cohen just told, but would you mind walking the public through a little bit why the 12-month, the vacant units have a one-year for those that had been, or, sorry, a notice and a one-year for those that had vacated within 12 months prior? Thanks.
Right. So that's to make sure that we capture any former tenant who were occupying the units. Sometimes that can be a little more tricky to track down. We'd hope that the property owner will be forthcoming, but sometimes that doesn't happen, is what we've found in other communities. And so, it's identifying if you have a vacant unit, but it was occupied within the past 12 months, was that person displaced because of a rent increase or something else? And making sure that that person has the right to either purchase, and then making sure that they are, have safe and affordable housing as well.
Thank you. So just to clearly, just to restate what you just said for the public, in the scenario that Counselor Cohen walked through, and that we are seeing throughout the city, I know that there's been a couple of instances in Word 2 that are currently underway, that means that if someone has been displaced, if rent was increased and they were unable to afford it, they now have the opportunity for, to seek further support in retrospect, right? So I imagine part of the public awareness campaign will be, will include notifying, or attempting to sort of publicly make the folks aware, so that if there is no forwarding address or something, that I think the hope is maybe they come forward. I think it's going to be, I think, I support that. I wonder that it might be difficult to enforce, and so I'm curious to hear how, as a requirement of the permitting process that I do support, I'm just curious to hear, you know, what will the coordinator do in an instance where the, you know, the landlord just says, look, they moved to, you know, Chelsea, I have no idea. Or, you know, they moved to their sister's, and I have no idea. And I'm curious to hear more about that. Maybe we can talk more about it at the Affordable Housing Trust Fund Board meeting that we have. But I think it's a, I think, I think that specific piece of this will probably confuse some folks, and so I think it's really good that we took some time to talk through it. I think that that goes in part to what the Word 1 counselor was talking about a little bit, about, yes, we need this notification period, and also, we are clearly jumping in midstream, right? Like, there is a hemorrhaging happening, and this retroactive action enables us to support folks that who have already been displaced, which I think is, you know, a really important, an important part of this. Thanks.
So just to be even more clear, so the displacement, what you're trying to catch is people who may buy a two or three-family, raise the rent considerably, knowing that they want to turn it into condos, and the people just can't stay there anymore, and so they find a new place. Is that?
That's one of many scenarios that could happen.
One of many, but, yes. All right. Counsel McCarthy.
If I could just follow up, because it's a very good question.
Can you speak into your mic, please?
I'm sorry. Because that's a very good question, is, how does, so, you're XYZ renter, you're living in a place, and, you know, all of a sudden, you catch wind that the place, your building's going to get sold. So, you know, so you, you see the writing on the wall, and you decide, you know what, I'm going to start looking. So you're fortunate enough, maybe to be in the right position at the right time, to find another place, and you decide to either ask out of your lease, or if you're a tenant at will, you get out, you get out, and you decide, give your notice, and you move. So now you moved, now you did that on your own free will, but you, with anticipation that the unit was going to get sold. So now, it does get sold, but you moved out prior to sale. Now, there's a year look back now, from what I'm reading. So now you look back, and you're going to contact that person who lived in that unit, and you're going to reach out to them. So is the intent to reach out to them to find out if they were forced to move, or if they moved voluntarily? And either way, is the intent also then to give them, to make the new owner who didn't, and this is something, and dependent on the scenario, didn't own the property at the time, pay the relocation fee for that person? Because that person, but that person moved out prior to the sale, only because they felt like, you know, two years from now, I'm going to have to move anyway, or whatever it is. So I'm going to, you know, I found a place, I'm going to get out. So is the intent to try to make the new owner pay that relocation fee retroactively? Or how, I guess, what's the, why, what's the intent of reaching out to someone who moved out prior?
Yeah, that's, I think there's a lot to get through, or to tease out there. So I'd say first, in thinking through that, we'll need to, with the trust, identify the start time, both for those vacant units as well, because there's got to be, you've got to have a cutoff date, you know? And then, what the intent is to make sure that the tenant has safe and adequate housing. And so that, that's the goal that we're trying to achieve here, and I think these are such great comments in thinking about implementation, and so I think it's something, this is something that we'll need to work through. But the ultimate goal is ensuring that that tenant has safe and adequate housing, so how that gets implemented, we'll work through that.
Can I just ask a question? And I don't know if we have this data, but do we have any data on the condos, the condo conversions that are happening? Are they from people who bought the building with the intent to do that? Or is it a homeowner who's been there that says, all right, I don't really need this space, I could use a little bit more money, I'll take my two or three-unit, two or three-family house and turn it into condos, I'll stay in one, and I'll sell the other two?
Yeah, I haven't fleshed out the data in that way.
Yeah, I think that's a really important thing to understand, and I know that it's not going to catch everything, and it certainly isn't, it could be a little bit predictive, it's certainly not 100% predictive, I get that. But I think that if homeowners look at this condo conversion thing and say, well, it's going to affect my sale, or what if I want to do that? I mean, my whole, my whole thing is, why would they do that if their intent is to move to Florida? They're not going to be doing the condo conversion, right? They're going to sell their house and let someone else to do it. So, just trying to figure out the effects of this on current homeowners. So anyways, any kind of data like that, I think, would be helpful. I mean, I know in my neighborhood, I have a mix of ones, twos, threes, and a couple of buildings with four or more, and we have lots of condo conversions, but they were sold, for the most part. They were sold to developers who then came in and changed them into condos. There's only one I can think of that the homeowner turned it into condos before he, you know, while he was still living there. So anyways, just some data, if we happen to have it. I'm going to actually allow Counselor Merkel to speak right now.
Thank you, President Marcello, and thank you, Amanda, and the Affordable Housing Trust Fund. This, a lot of work went into this, and it's really impressive. I just had two questions here. In regards to the homeroad petition, if I took my notes correctly on when you spoke to that point, you had said it's had two readings, and is headed to its third reading at the state, and I was wondering, is that the last reading? Is there an estimated time that the rest of the process will take? And also, for the right to purchase at market price, I was wondering to encourage more, you know, first-time homeownership with this. If it will include information to the tenants in the language they speak, any first-time homebuyer assistance that's available with the city, any programs? Because you had spoken to, when they're renters, that they would get information, so I was wondering what efforts could be made to make that first-time homebuyer option wondering what efforts could be made to make that first-time homebuyer option happen? Thanks.
Thank you. I'm not sure about the legislation, what happens next, or the timeframe with that. It's sort of, it could go a few different ways, and so it's really hard to say when that would be voted on, or if it goes to other committees, I'm just, I'm not, I'm not sure. In terms of the resources to the tenant, that will be really, a large part of the neighborhood stability coordinator's role is connecting that tenant with exactly those types of resources. You have a tenant that might be interested in acquiring the property, so connecting them, the city has a first-time homebuyer program, Mass Housing has a first-time homebuyer program. We have, is identifying these resources, and so that's going to be that go-to person and why it's essential to have their contact information as part of the notice of intent.
Okay. Counsel Cohen.
Thank you, Madam President. Just to address Counselor Merkel's question about the legislation, and this is, it's not set in stone, so there are variables, but typically the third reading is when something is enacted. It was referred favorably out of the first committee and is sitting in another committee, but they're not in session right now, so it really depends on when they're back in session and how quickly our legislators, you know, interact with each, with the other legislatures on those committees and how hard it's pushed and how, because home rule petitions, as we know, from liquor licenses, for example, can take a lot less time than some of the ones that have been sitting in the legislature.
Counsel Hepworth.
Thank you, Madam President. And thank you, Amanda, for putting this together. Just speaking from when I was on the Affordable Housing Trust Fund, this took a rough idea, which was we need to do something to protect, to deal with condo conversions and protect tenants, and you created something that I think is very workable, and we really, really appreciate what we've, what we've built here. And also, I'll just add that, you know, there are certainly concerns that we've all heard about, but the, you know, our ordinances have a mountain of items in them that protect homeowners and very little that protects renters, so I think that we are moving in the right direction in doing something here, and just hope we'll continue to move forward with that. The, I guess the two questions I have, number one is just if there are other communities, because this is a state law that's as old as some of the people in this room here, and is, are there other communities that have enforced, managed to enforce this in some ways? And if so, have they done it in a similar fashion? And then I guess just last after that is just around the right to purchase. Just, I think I have some confusion around that, so just if you could kind of clarify what that, what that process looks like.
Yeah, so the ordinance that we're framing out, we looked at Somerville is the example that I would point to, is that's the one that we've, we've had a lot of conversations with and how their ordinance is going, and have modeled some of our ordinance around that one. There are other communities that have, sort of have condo or tenant protection ordinances that came out around where, where the prohibition on rent increases came out, but they're not enforced or implemented. And so I'd say Somerville is the most robust one to look at. And you had a second question there.
Right to purchase.
Oh, and the right to purchase. So the way that works is, and the tenant gets the, it's essentially a first right of refusal, goes to the tenant, the right to purchase. And so the property owner, let's say they're in their condo on the market, they're planning to list it for $425,000, whatever it is. The tenant gets that first right to make an offer. The landlord, if they make the offer, that's being proposed, it has to be, they have to be reasonable, then they get that first right rather than it going to the market. If the tenant decides, "No, that's not for me, not going to do that," then the city would have the opportunity to do that first right of refusal. It might not be the city, it wouldn't be the city, it would be the Affordable Housing Trust Fund Board, is that if the city, if it's a designee, the unit has to be affordable, has to be deed restricted as affordable, and that's one of the requirements we're working on. And so it could be the Affordable Housing Trust Fund Board acquires it and then goes through a process to dispose of it with a deed restriction on it, or the trust of the city could have their designee, could be a nonprofit, acquires it. But again, there'd have to be a deed restriction on that unit, because the goal there is to make sure that the unit would be affordable if it's not, if it's being sold at that first right of refusal.
How do we ensure it's at a, is there, are there regulations around price drops and price increases for what they list? I'm trying to remember how that.
Not in the ordinance. That's another tricky one to get your hands around. I mean, if a landlord's proposing to list something for a price and that's what's offered, it'd be hard to say you can't take the offer, provided that the tenant can actually acquire the property.
If the landlord says it's $1 million, and then the tenant says, "I can't," and then they drop it to 450, is that something that we can control? I guess I'm not, I'm not sure on that.
Yeah, there's, I mean, there's going to have to be reason, there's reasonability there, and that's something that the neighborhood stability coordinator would work with, both the tenant and the property owner. If it's some, a number that's just clearly not in the ball field, then they can push back on that, but you know, it's looking at the data we have, the resources we have to do that.
Thank you.
Counsel Ricardi.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just another shout-out to Ms. Chan-Cohen, her fabulous presentation. Thank you. Following up, though, on that conversation that we just had about the purchase and right to purchase, and combining it with the timeline that the tenant has of two years. So I'm just trying to work it out in my brain as to how that would work. So somebody puts it up in the market, offer goes to the tenant, the tenant says no, but then the tenant can still stay there for two years?
Right, because the tenant in that interim period is looking for another apartment, or looking for someplace else to live. And so the tenant, it's, that two-year period is for that tenant to find someplace else to live. So if they find another apartment, or they find another home to buy, or someplace else to live in six months, then that unit could be converted in six months. But it's two years or when the tenant finds another location to live.
Is the, if I may follow up with that, is the tenant only offered one option, like at the beginning to offer? Because in two years from now, we don't know what market values are going to be like. I mean, that's what I talk about all day long, it might, so you know, rates changing, property value's changing, so like January 2022, they might not be able to purchase something, but then in January 2024, they might be able to have the funds, the market might be different, the property value might be different. So is it just kind of like a one shot? Or like, "No, I can't purchase it now, but I know I have two years' protection to stay here?" So if they can't purchase it now, then the owner, I'm assuming, can't sell it? Right?
Right. The owner cannot sell it until after they have a final certification permit, a final conversion permit. And so the tenant gets a first right of refusal. If they refuse it, and then in two years, things change, and now they can make a bid on the property, they're certainly welcome to do that. It would be at market with other potential homebuyers.
Counsel Watson-Pelt.
Thank you. Just wanted to make a similar comment. As I understood it, and from our previous conversations on the Affordable Housing Trust Fund Board, it felt a little bit like there was an order of events. We had talked about a period of time during which that first right of refusal expires before additional action needs to be taken. I don't know where we landed on that. Maybe we should pick that back up again at the next meeting, which is to Counsel Ricardi's point, I think, a little bit. But in it, but what that space does allow, and we should be mindful of as well, which is like, if a tenant has a desire to make the purchase, but they need, you know, eight, nine, 10 weeks to get through a loan process or more in some cases, to figure out if they can, right, then, then that is built into that period, right? And so, so to your point, Counsel Ricardi, yes, values definitely change, but I think we're trying to, to sort of truncate that, that, sort of hyper-concentrate that process within a period into a time box, right? So that, so that then there is an opportunity to also find an affordable place, get that, you know, that relocation payment and everything. Correct me if I'm wrong, though. You're nodding. Okay, great. Great. And then the second thing I wanted to just say is, I feel like as a member, Counsel Hepworth reminded me, but as a member of Affordable Housing Trust Fund Board before, you know, year, whenever this started, I would, I feel I would be remiss if I didn't acknowledge the incredible work that, and the dedication, and the research, and the time, and the data, and the drawing, and the writing, and all of that, that Counselor, former Counselor Mordor did as the head of the working group that picked this effort up initially. And so I just want to thank her as well for that effort, and to thank, to thank you, Amanda, for, of course, seeing that through to where we are today. Thanks.
Counsel Ricardi.
Thank you, Madam President, or Madam Chair. I just had another follow-up question on the purchase. My brain is spinning now about this. The permitting process, or I guess the timeframe of what, how does that start, or when does that start? So say an owner of a three-family property knows in two years they want to sell their property. Can they start that process knowing that them selling their three-family with the option to convert it to condos will get them a much higher value than them selling a three-family? Or does it have to be the owner of the person that is then turning it into condos to start the permitting process? Or the process to convert it to condos? That question makes sense, I'm trying to say that.
Does it have to be the owner?
I apologize. Does it have to be the owner that is going to be converting to the condo units, or can it, can the process start and then a new owner come in?
Yeah, the process could start and a new owner can come in. I don't see, I don't believe there's anything that precludes that. Let me look at it again, and I think that's something for discussion with the trust.
Counsel McCarthy.
Yeah, because that's a great question, because if you own a property and you know, and your intent is to sell, you could start checking the boxes now. You could notify your tenants, "I am going to sell the property in 2025. That's my plan, I'm going to retire, I'm going to sell my property, and so therefore, I'm letting, I'm giving you notice that the building..." And so you could start checking all those boxes, so that when, you know, as Counselor Cohen alluded to, that, you know, some, at that point, some people could move out, and then the building is ready and set to be sold, because it could be vacant, because he, he or she, whoever owns the building, is now given notice that their intent is to sell at a certain date, and as you, as a tenant, then you, you know, you're checking all the boxes of the amount of time that you can do it, but then that, let's be 100% honest, if you're, if you're, if you're, I'm going to put my builder hat on now. If I'm a builder and I'm going to buy a property, and all the boxes have been checked, and I can come in, purchase that property, and start working on it right away, so I can turn the place over faster, that's more, that's more cost-effective for that person, so that's just a question of when does the clock start ticking? And I guess, I guess the question with regards to offering first refusal to the tenant, if your intent is to convert, then do you, is your first refusal to, if we filed all the documentation and converted the unit into a condo as-is? Because obviously, it depends on the age of the condo, what's in the condo, if, so that would affect the price, because if, if the, if someone obviously is going to try to maximize their price, they're going to come in, change out light fixtures, throw coat of paint on it, replace the kitchen cabinets, fix up the bathroom. I mean, obviously, the big, the big-money items are your kitchen and your bath. The rest of the rooms are just, you know, paint for, people are going to move their bedroom furniture into their living room furniture, whatever. So is it, so is at that point, when you first refusal, is it as-is? Or because it's difficult to work on a piece of property when you have tenants in there, you're going to get, you're going to wait till that period's over, and then renovate, and then maximize, maximize what you get by your, by, on what your return is and what you put in? So it's a, it's a juggling act, I'm just saying. It's because, and then I guess the, my follow-up question is that is, as I'm sitting here and I was listening to you, is the city is then, every time someone refuses, when everyone gets someone, the tenant gets first refusal, do then they notify, then who notifies the city that a unit has just been offered to a tenant, then refused, and then the city's new coordinator is going to go in and evaluate whether or not the city or another nonprofit wants to go in and make that first refusal offer? Is that how that's going to work? So there's, is that another layer to this whole thing? I guess that's my question.
Right, so I'm going to start with, with the first part regarding the clock. That's a really important policy question that we haven't talked through with the trust, and so we have work to do there in thinking about when that clock does start, because I could see it going a couple of different ways, and there are pros and cons to both. And so I think that's just something that the trust has to work through. So thank you all so much for this feedback. And then the same thing with what that value is, because there, what we're, the way, what we were proposing with this framework is that a landlord can make improvements to their unit, it would just have to be reasonable, you can't, you know, essentially have the tenant not live in a, can't be an unlivable unit, you know, but they can go in there and make repairs and improvements. But that value, we haven't discussed. So that's another thing, another policy question we need to work through. And then in terms of who notifies them, as part of the notice of intent, as part of the application for the landlord, so the landlord has to demonstrate that they made that, they offered the first right of refusal, and the tenant has a contact information for the coordinator in case they say it didn't happen. But it's the landlord's responsibility to let the tenant, the neighborhood stability coordinator know in the application that, "Yep, I've checked that box, I've given the first right of refusal, they didn't accept," or "They did accept, and now we're working through whatever that agreement is."
I guess, if I may.
Just speaking, because the public cannot hear you.
The public cannot hear me, okay. I guess my question is, then, the owner notifies the new coordinator position, and then the owner notifies the coordinator position that the tenant was offered and refused. So at that point, then the coordinator goes in by the, goes in and looks at the place? Or contacts another agency to look at the place? I guess the, when you stated that the city has, can take over the first refusal and buy and purchase it themselves, or through another agency, how do, that's like added, because now you've gone from the tenant getting first refusal, the tenant returns down first refusal, but now the city or some other agency is going to step in to try to keep that unit, but what kind of timeframe goes on that?
Right, so to be, the city actually has right of first refusal on some properties here in Salem. We have first-time homebuyer properties. We actually just had one a few months ago, maybe six months or so ago, and the city didn't act on that, but what would happen is the, the property owner says, "I offered the right to the tenant, that didn't work out." Then the city gets that right, and then the city, and there's a timeframe associated with that. We talked about it, I don't have it in front of me, but there will be a timeframe that the city has to say yes or no by. And by the city, this would really be going to the condo review board or the trust to determine, is this a property that we think it makes sense to acquire and deed restrict if they have money to do that? But it will have a timeline associated with it, so it's transparent for the property owner in making sure that they can still move forward, because again, the goal is to allow a process to happen, it's not to prohibit it.
Counsel Cohen.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Although I support the right of first refusal by a tenant, the percentage of tenants that have the means to purchase a property is minuscule. The fact that 40,000 is the median income means that most renters don't make that even. And I know just anecdotally, the, all the renters in the units that I mentioned on my street, none of them, you know, they were having a hard enough time to afford to stay in the property as-is, even if their rent didn't get raised, because our rental stock has been diminishing significantly over years, so it's, it's less viable than it was just before those statistics came out. So I do believe, I'm not asking a question, I do believe that the most important component is, is the notice, because that, as Amanda said, gives the tenants some ability to find a place, hopefully in an area that they would like to live in.
Counsel McLean.
Thank you, Counsel President. Let me get back to my notes here. Thank you, Amanda, for joining us tonight, giving Thank you, Amanda, for joining us tonight, giving us this extra time in the evening to discuss this. Appreciate the presentation. I just want to rewind a little bit and sort of set a bit of a baseline. And wonder if you could speak to the rights that a tenant might have right now in the absence of this ordinance taking place, right? So if I am, for example, you know, a tenant on a one-year lease, just kind of a straightforward standard kind of thing, and say I have six months left and my landlord says to me, "I'm planning to convert your apartment into condos," right? What sort of recourse does that tenant have right now in the absence of this protection? Can their lease be broken? Will they be bumped out? Do they have their six months that are remaining? What would happen for that person?
This is an excellent question. Unfortunately, I don't have an answer for you. So I will get back to you. I'm not well-versed in tenant protection. If it's a building with four or more units, then they are protected under state law. But again, we're just not implementing it. And so, per law, there is supposed to be a notice provided to that tenant in advance for those tenants with four, with fewer than four units. I'll have to get back to you. I'm just not very familiar.
Sure, no problem. Along the same line of thinking, I wonder, if you're able, if you can speak to what kind of assistance and services available to the residents of Salem now, who are in this, in this moment? As was stated previously, this is, this is already in play, right? This is something that's already happening all around us. And one of the things that I think I noticed about this information, it was a lot of information, but if I understood it correctly, it's possible that a tenant could be in a situation where a landlord chooses to raise their rent. The landlord could raise their rent to a reasonable degree. Maybe they've kept the rent low for them, for whatever reason. Maybe it's just that the market bears them raising the rent and they can just do that year over year. And according to my understanding of what I just read in the proposal, if somebody vacates their apartment and finds somebody else to live and 13 months go by and it's only been the owner occupying that property, then they're, then they're applicable for the waiver and they don't get into the weeds with all of this. And so, I worry about, I worry about it incentivizing people to say, "Well, I'll raise your rent and clear you out and then I'll just wait a year and a month instead of waiting the two to four years and there you go." And so where does that person come right now to get assistance right now for, for the situation they need to deal with? So, if you have the information and you're able to speak to what kind of services the city offers right now to assist a tenant who may be in that position, that would be great. Because I think along with the information campaign we're going to need for landlords and owners, we're really going to need a tenants' rights information campaign for all of the renters. And the condo conversion protection is just going to be one piece of the rights and assistance they can get, I would hope.
Correct, yeah. So that is just one piece. And the neighborhood stability coordinator will be providing a lot more tenant protection to just that and linking folks with resources. So currently, the city has a housing stability office. We partnered with the Essex County Bar Association. So if there's any tenant or landlord disputes, any, any concerns that tenants have, there's a couple of ways that they can get assistance. There's drop-in hours in November at Espacio, we passed the second, on the 17th from 4:00 to 7:00. Or at the Community Life Center on November 10th from 4:00 to 10:00. And again, at Community Life Center from 9:00 AM to 2:00 PM. There's also a hotline that can be called. It's 978-500-0973. Again, that's a housing stability hotline. So any tenants out there, if you have any kind of housing stability issues, please call that hotline and leave a message. An attorney will call you back and help link you with services, go through whatever it is that you need to discuss with your housing stability status. And there's a whole bunch of really great public service agencies in Salem that offer, again, relocation costs, rental assistance. We have rental assistance. We have fuel assistance. Winter is coming, you know, through NASCAP, Catholic Charities, Salvation Army, there's a whole bunch of them that offer those kinds of resources. And the housing stability office can assist people connecting with them. The Disability Resource Center is a really great resource as well for folks. They also assist with filling out applications for affordable housing. And then also the Community Life Center. We have social workers there that assist with our older adults and, again, can help with applications or housing stability services. So, a few of the, there's just, there's a lot out there and it's hard to manage that field. And that's where I see the housing stability coordinator as being that air traffic control pilot, trying to link people up to the resources and making sure that they, they know where to go.
Wonderful answer. Thank you. I just have just a couple more questions. Specifically, wanted to ask about the relocation fee. I did notice that, I did notice that we chose to put a hard number in there, $5,000. It seems likely to me that in Salem today, that's probably not going to be a lot, enough money in a lot of situations. But we don't know what the market will do. I'm curious why, I'm curious if you remember what the process was at Affordable Housing Trust that arrived at a hard number versus, you know, sort of an agreement and understanding, right? Like first, first-last security plus moving expenses kind of thing? Why it was a choice to put an actual dollar figure in there versus something that's a little more future-proof?
Yeah, so the, that discussion, we didn't talk about why it was a hard number versus just that they, well, just that first-last security. I think for implementation-wise, that's why it was proposed as being a hard number. However, the ordinance, we are proposing it to have a percent increase each year. So I'll get that for you. Because we did talk about, you know, it's $5,000 the year it's adopted, but in 10 years, that might not be enough. So it would increase each year with the price of living, with the cost of living adjustment. But yeah, the reason why staff proposed a hard number was just for implementation, to make that more streamlined.
Understood. Thank you. And I think my final question for now is about the waiting period for the occupied units. Specifically, specifically the waiting period that gives tenants enough time to seek housing, right? So they've got, you know, depending on their class and what's going on, two to four years. Is the tenant required to demonstrate any sort of good faith effort, for lack of a better word? "I applied for housing here. I looked for housing there. You know, I found this housing but I couldn't afford it kind of thing, so I didn't take it." You know, speaking to the question that we heard earlier from the Ward 6 Counselor, you know, "I have two years. I'm going to try to put away some funds so I can try to purchase this property" kind of thing. "Can you work with me so I can try to accrue some capital?" Those kinds of questions. Is there, are there points in that, in that waiting period where the tenant has to come forward and say, "This is what I'm doing towards this end"? Because I'm, I'm very sympathetic to tenants, frankly. I think they're, they're getting it the worst right now. But, but I do have, I do have some love in my heart for the owners. And I think it's fair to say, if you're going to make me wait for a couple of years so that this person can find a place to live, I'd really like to know they're looking for a place to live and that they're not just hanging out for the next year and a half and then they're going to look for a place to live.
It's actually proposed sort of flip, or the opposite of that, where the landlord would need to have good faith to assist the tenant in finding another location and assist in them in relocating. The tenant doesn't need to come forward and state that they have looked or proposed, or share anything with what they're proposing. Our hope, our goal here is that the neighborhood stability coordinator would be in touch with that tenant and trying to assist them. Because this is a real thing. There's a, there's a hard deadline. You're not going to have a home in two years. And so, it takes time to find a unit. And so it, some of that is that social service or connecting that tenant with social services to help them find that. But no, the tenant doesn't need to come forward and demonstrate that they're trying to find a home, a new home.
Okay. Thank you.
Counselor McCarthy.
Just one last statement. With regard to the makeup of your proposed committee, two homeowners, two renters and one member from the Affordable Housing Trust. When you say homeowners, I would amend that to like two or three family homeowners. I mean, because if you limit, if you, the way it's written, homeowners, you could have someone who owns a single-family home that's not in a neighborhood that's affected by this. So when you identify the homeowners on that potential commission, there should be someone who owns a home that's either a two or three or four unit, owns the building, with a multiple-unit building as opposed to a single-family home. Because they, they would have a different perspective on the whole thing. That's just my opinion, but...
Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, we are going to open this up to the public. We do have a couple of attendees in Zoom land and we have one in, in the chambers. Not sure if she wants to make a statement yet. But if you would like to ask a question or make a statement, you can use the raised hand function on Zoom. First up is Christine Medor, former counselor from Ward 2.
Hi, everybody. Christine Medor, 20 Federal Street, Unit 8. I brought all my October complaints. Oh, wait, this is not that. Okay. I just happened to have this in my purse. No. Oh, the parking complaints. So, I really didn't have any statement to make other than wanted to be here to see the process through, given that much of the research that you saw tonight in the slides. I was the one who put that together and felt that I could probably provide additional background if they were lost during the several meetings that the Affordable Housing Trust Fund Board had, that they had discussed over the course of several months, that I could maybe add some context from the beginning. And just hearing all of your feedback and questions is really helpful as well. And I want to make sure that, first of all, when you, as you go through this process of considering the actual ordinances, make sure to continue to refer back to the four purposes of this ordinance. That, first of all, this is not an ordinance to eliminate condo conversions. The very first purpose is that it's to decelerate the rate of condo conversion ordinances. And so it's not to eliminate. We're not trying to stop condo conversion ordinances. In fact, we're trying to make it even better to make sure that the, the local law applies to our very unique needs of two to three-family properties being converted. So, keep that in mind and there's hard data that shows that. And then the second purpose is that you're trying to preserve the diverse housing options in Salem and that includes condos. We don't want to eliminate condo conversions or the creation of condos of these kind of smaller two-bedroom condos. That we want to make sure they still happen, but that they're not happening much faster than the other ones. So you saw the data that the, the condos are being added at a much higher pace than the renters, than the rental units are being added. So we're just trying to strike a balance here. And there's a lot of discussion about the rights of the homeowner. And I just want to remind you all that, again, this ordinance is to strike a balance, right? The state law currently affords tenants, tenant rights that are not being enforced in Salem. And when I was doing research for the ordinance, I spoke with several communities that have adopted local condo conversion ordinances. And all but one, which is the city of Somerville, only one community, the city of Somerville, actually hires staff to enforce their local ordinance. All the other ones, I think there were about 15 or so communities that have adopted local condo conversion ordinances to make it even stronger, to meet their local needs. And all of them said, "We adopted it, but we didn't hire any staff to implement it. So it's basically a waste of time." So here, we are following a successful model in Somerville. I believe that when they adopted, from what I, when I spoke to their staff, I heard that when they adopted the ordinance, the rate of condo conversion, and Somerville, you know, very dense city, lots of households, lots of units to be converted, it went from, I think it was like 100 a month to just a handful a month. And it, they're not, there's still conversions happening. They're just at a much slower pace so that the tenants can take their time, know their rights, find a place to, to live after they leave the unit. So this is just a way for our tenants to make sure they know their rights. And there's a question, oh, so, the imbalance right now is that the homeowners right now, given the law that we have, which is state law, the imbalance is that the owners have more rights than the tenants. And this would be a way for this intermediary staff person in the city, by law, to make sure the tenants have their rights. And then the question about, how is this going to affect property owners who own two, three families? Yes, it will affect them, but it does not preclude them from selling the property. I think a lot of the questions about, "Oh, is this going to affect my property rights?" I think only the, the clock that starts this process is the notice of intent. And in the current state law, it says that the notice of intent can take in several forms, including the property owner tells the tenant, "Hey, I'm going to convert it to condos, so you need to get out here in X number of time." That verbal notice is a notice of intent. If the property owner advertises on Zillow, "Hey, I want to sell this property so that you can convert it to condo," that could be considered as a notice of intent if you put it into your, the language of your ordinance. That could be a notice of intent. But going back to Counselor Marcelo's question about, "Do we have data about who's buying these and converting them?" Yes, we do. But it's all in the registry of deeds. When, when a property owner files a master deed, that is when they are saying they're converting the units to condos. That's the hard data we have out there. The more quantitative data that you can track down, but, excuse me. But this data is just everywhere. It's hard to track. But the notice of intent is really when the clock starts. It could be the property owner who wants to start the clock by giving the tenant notice of intent before they sell it. They could sell it without saying anything about converting it and have the new owner do the notice of intent. So it could go either way. But really, this entire ordinance, this entire permitting process, is only applicable to the person who wants to convert the property, whether they are 20-year owners of the property or they just bought the property yesterday. So this process is only for the owner who wants to convert. It's, it doesn't have to be the person who owned the property. They can sell it and have somebody else convert it. So it would not preclude a property owner from selling the property. And I just want to make that clear. And I, Counselor McLean brought up the logic behind relocation fee. And I remember the discussion about what's the right number? Because $750 is not enough. So what we did is, this was what, two years ago now, Amanda? So at the time, we looked at the average rent of Salem and we did some very simple arithmetic, first-last security, right? And then we figure out, okay, roughly what is that number on average? I forget the number we came up with. But I think, like Amanda said, for the purpose of streamlining the language in the ordinance, 5,000 was roughly the right number. But we really actually looked at the market rent at the time, which is outdated, unfortunately, and make sure that actually reflects local rent levels. So that's the story there. And then Counselor Watson Vell brought up, I think you brought this up, what happens to the tenant during the notice of, of intent, the period of notice of intent. So the notice period could go up to, what, two years to start? I think we had discussed that in the ordinance, it should be explicit that the tenant cannot be evicted during the notice period. And we don't have to find the language of the ordinance yet, but I would encourage this body to think about whether we should add that, to make it clear that when you have received this notice of intent to leave, to vacate this property, that you also cannot be evicted during this period. And I think that's very, very important, especially if you're still trying to find a home. And also being evicted would just add insult to injury. I think that's all I have, but I really, really want to see this adopted. It's, it's so important and it would make a huge impact in Salem, especially around affordability. And I really... And I really appreciate all your effort in reviewing this. And it's going to be, I know it's going to be a while, but I will make sure to follow your discussions and happy to answer any questions along the way or even donate my time again to Amanda and the city if you need it. Thanks, everyone.
Thank you. Counsel Dominguez.
Thank you, ma'am. I had a quick question, and thank you. Good to see you.
For Counsel Medor.
Good to see you again in this body. We miss you here.
I don't miss you, sorry. I miss you outside when I'm here.
Yeah. My question is in regard, the intent notice is good, but we hear a lot of comments on the protected class, and I think that, we all know that mostly, most of the protected class are from the Latino community. And sometimes we bring the information, but it's this lack of education to follow up because it's one thing that we mentioned in paper. The other thing is to really, really educate who are the beneficiary so they can really actually know their right. There is any intention to do any type of campaign in other language? In this case, I mentioned the Latino community because it's one of the communities that is in growing. Is there an intention, is there discussion by you when you were formulating that, that it's going to be a, together with noticing intention and to follow up, to make sure that everybody really know their right?
I can also let Amanda answer this question, but the protected class is very explicit in federal law. The protected class, I believe, and I apologize if I don't list everyone, but it's, you cannot be discriminated against based on your sex, your sex, your religion, place of origin, disability, age.
Race.
Race, sorry. So it's based on whether you are at risk of being discriminated against. It's not based on how you identify to start with. And I think one proposed addition for the local ordinance that this body can consider is adding, not adding, but editing, the protected class to lower the age of, I think it's elderly, people who are elderly, lowering the age from 65 to 60. But I think specific details on protected class, Amanda could provide you with that information. But if you want to add something about language isolation, I believe that you could do that, but I would make sure that you have the data to back that up first. Amanda, you want to add something to that? Okay. I'm going to back up.
All right. We do have a member of the public who'd like to speak, Lori Stewart. You should be able to speak.
Hi, this is Lori Stewart from Seven Barnes Road. I just want to say that I'm really happy to see that the city council is having this discussion. I wanted to thank Amanda Chancola for her presentation tonight. It was very informative. And also, I thought the questions from the city counselors were excellent. Those were things that I hadn't even thought of. I just want to remind the council that we are not eliminating people's right to convert to condos. This is more about anti-displacement. And displacement is a terrible thing. And I do work in the field of property management, and I do work with people who are in the process of being displaced. And there are financial costs to society for displacement, like foster care. Sometimes people are displaced and their children are taken from them, homelessness, all the costs associated with that. But I also want to recognize the relationship between the tenant and the landlord. And I do see this, the tenant protections as essentially consumer protections because the tenants have been providing income to the owner. And it's just a different viewpoint that I have, and I do think everybody's viewpoint should be considered. But I really urge the council to keep the tenant protection part very strong. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else from the public who would like to speak? Seeing none. Amanda.
Madam President, if you'll allow it, I did have an email from a gentleman who wanted me to read this. He said, hi, Amanda, unfortunately, and just to let the council and members of the public know, I sent a message out to anyone who has contacted me or responded to that survey or had been in touch regarding condos to let them know about the ordinance that come tonight, and this was a response that he wasn't able to attend tonight. Unfortunately, I could not wait until the City of Salem imposed onerous restrictions on the sale of private property. I provided two units of stable housing at or below market rent to families for over 15 years. I was happy to continue renting, but with the possibility of having to wait up to four years before being able to sell my house, the risk was too great. So this is a real-world tangible result of misguided policy. I hope you share this email tonight or at the meeting. And before this, with the, when I sent out the survey, I'd had other property owners contact me saying, I'm just going to do this now because I see it coming in the future. So that is something to keep in mind and something that we'll continue to work through with the trust in identifying what that timeline is and if there's sort of that cool-off period of when it starts.
Can I just ask you a question?
Sure.
I'm just trying to figure out the person who wrote the letter. First of all, can we enter the name into the record?
Oh, yeah, this is David Halle, H-A-L-E-Y. I don't have an address.
Okay. Was he, can you tell me what the bottom line is there? Is he selling his house because he's afraid, or does he think that he wouldn't be able to sell his house because of this?
My interpretation of this is that he either already sold his house or is going to sell his house because of the possibility of having to wait.
Having.
And that's what I've heard from other homeowners.
That this could slow down a process of conversion? That's what.
That they're going to sell now so that they don't have to wait in the future. That they're, I'm sorry, sell, I'm using the word sell. I mean, convert. They will convert the units now.
Okay.
Or sell.
Okay. There's another member of the public, Jeff Millar. I will allow you to speak.
Good evening. My name is Jeff Millar. I live at 29 Boardman Street. I think I'm the only tenant in Salem who's participated in this meeting tonight so far. And as a tenant in Salem who has also been a homeowner and a condo owner, I think it's important that we move carefully here. You know, this feels a little bit like a broad brush, and I completely agree that tenants are, you know, the most, probably the most at risk of residents in Salem in that, you know, if I have a mortgage on a property, I know how much that mortgage is. And yes, I'll see some tax increases, some insurance increases. I know people who have had their rent go up $1,200 overnight. At the same time, I know a bunch of people in Salem who are renters who are desperate to buy a condo, who have looked for years and they can't find anything remotely affordable at this point. If you look at the prices of condos over the last five, six years in Salem, a lot of them have doubled. I asked when the home rule petition was discussed previously, what the projected impact to condo prices in Salem would be when we instituted this and made it harder to convert to a condo. And the answer that I got from one of the city counselors that I asked was, we just don't know. I think that needs some fleshing out. I would also say that when you talk about two- and three-unit houses being converted to condos, I kind of feel like there should be some, I feel like somebody who's owned the property for 20 years and has lived in it, as a two-family, let's say, and in fact, there's one almost directly across the street from me right now, where the family is two retired former City of Salem employees who have lived in the larger second and third-floor unit for, you know, decades. And they are in the process of a condo conversion right now where their intent is to be able to age in place by moving into the first-floor unit while selling the larger second and third-floor unit, probably a really good retirement plan, honestly. But I feel like that should be looked at differently from somebody who's buying a property that they have no attachment to, so that they can come in and kick out the tenants and make a quick buck by flipping it to condos. And I haven't heard anything yet that sounds like we're going to treat those scenarios any differently. So like I said, I think it's a noble idea. I think that it probably needs to be done in a really deliberate and thoughtful way. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other questions? Counsel Cohen.
Yeah, I'd like to move that we keep this in the committee of the whole.
Counsel Cohen makes a motion to keep this in committee.
Second.
Seconded by Counsel Varela. Any further discussion? Seeing none, I will do a roll call vote since we have one virtual member. Let's see if I can remember the, Counsel Cohen.
Yes.
Counsel Dominguez.
Yes.
Counsel Hapworth.
Yes.
Counsel McCarthy.
Yes.
Counsel McLean.
Yes.
Let's see, Counsel Merkel.
Yes.
Counsel Ricardi.
Yes.
Counsel Varela.
Yes.
Counsel Watsonfeld.
Yes.
And myself is a yes. So we have 10 counselors voting, 10 in the affirmative that matter carries. Counsel McCarthy.
Move we adjourn.
Counsel McCarthy moves to adjourn. All is in favor. All is opposed. We are adjourned. Thank you, everyone, for being here. Thank you to Amanda Chancola for the excellent presentation.